The North Rock Planting Commission meeting. Before we get started, if you're here for special use 2020-8, it has been postponed. That was to allow a daycare in an R2 at 5301 Summer Tree Drive. So if you're here for that, then that has been postponed. The other thing is on the back of your agenda are the rules. If y'all would look at those are the rules. If you speak, please come to the podium so that we can get you on tape. And with that, could we have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Banks? Velasco?
Here.
Chambers?
Here.
Dietz?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Phillips?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chairman Clifton? Thank you.
Entertain a motion?
I move to excuse those members not present.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, we got none. All right, has everybody had a chance to, uh, to review the minutes from last meeting?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second. They have a motion second to approve. Would you call the roll, please, on that?
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Yes.
And White?
All right. Uh, our first one is to rezone 2020-15 to amend the land use plan from a single family to quiet business and to rezone property from R4 to C1 to allow for a house to be converted to an office and classroom space at 608 North Vine Street. Is the applicant here? And if you would, when you come, if you would give us your name and your address, please, sir, and speak into the microphone, yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, my name is Jerome Green. Uh, I'm the president of Shorter College at 604 North Locust Street in North Little Rock. Uh, may it please the commission, um, we're asking the commission to allow Shorter College to, um, uh, receive a rezoning to, so that, uh, what was a house in terrible repair that had been condemned by the city, uh, can be refurbished, uh, and used, uh, by the college for quiet office space, uh, and possible, uh, classroom use. Um, the, there would not be any increase in traffic, uh, uh, caused by the, the use of this building. We believe that it's an appropriate use, uh, of the property. Uh, the, uh, I think it should be noted that the property, that the house is across the street, uh, from a gymnasium, uh, where, uh, basketball games are held, uh, public events, uh, commissions, um, and a number of activities. Uh, it's also across the street, uh, from our student, uh, uh, union building, which is also used for, for public events. Uh, in fact, I believe that, uh, I've seen a letter, uh, from, um, uh, Ms. Glenda Ross, who, uh, opposes, uh, the use of the house, uh, on the grounds of traffic. Uh, but we have events on the campus, uh, that, uh, sometime brings traffic. Uh, in fact, uh, we gave her family, uh, the use of the Morris Building across the street, uh, for a large gathering, uh, free of charge, uh, for a family repass when there was a death. Uh, this, uh, those are large uses, but our uses of the building would be, um, very quiet. Uh, we see no change, uh, in, uh, activity or traffic in the neighborhood. We believe it's consistent with the other activity and we would request, um, that the commission allow us to, uh, to receive a zoning change so that, uh, this building can be used. I would add that it's a benefit to the community. Uh, when we bought the building last year, it had been condemned. It was, uh, a hazard to the community for health and other reasons. Uh, the owner approached Shorter College and, uh, uh, rather than allow the building to be condemned, we needed office space and additional classroom space. And so we did buy the building, uh, with an understanding that, uh, we would hope, in hopes, uh, that, uh, we would be able to use it.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Uh, does any of the commissioner have any questions, uh, for Mr. Green? Please? And is it Mr. Green or Dr. Green?
Yes, Green. Yes, yes.
Okay, but is it Mr. or Dr.?
Either is fine.
Okay, okay. Sure. Yes, Mr. Green.
Yes, uh, what, what do you expect the occupancy of this building to be when you get it fully functional?
Well, it's only about a four-room, uh, house.
Right.
Uh, so, uh, if we used all four rooms for, uh, offices, uh, uh, no more than five people who did not live there.
Right.
Uh, and the parking is available on campus. We have faculty parking, so the, we wouldn't, really wouldn't anticipate, uh, street parking. Uh, I believe that the house has a driveway, uh, for people who have their offices there and students who already have parking would walk from, across the street from, uh, the other classes to attend classes in that building if we had classrooms in there.
Right.
We still haven't decided whether we're gonna put a classroom in there, but we need more office space.
Yeah, I noticed your site plan, that you, your development site plan indicated onsite parking, so you're not gonna increase parking on the street in that area?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chambers?
Um, my first question was how were the students going to get there, but that, but your comments created another question. Uh, you do not know if you're using it for classrooms or for offices, and one of the persons who wrote said that it was represented to her that the building would be used as a, as a security office. A security office would certainly enhance the security of the neighborhood, whereas classrooms may be, may be more disruptive. Uh, is it a, to be determined if it's not classes or offices, or is it going to be an office, or is it gonna be a classroom?
It's really going to be determined. Uh, uh, we don't have an office for our security. We do have an on-campus, uh, security force. They do not have an office, so you, you might say that there's a, is a, is a, is a mild competition of, uh, the various, uh, persons on campus as to who would get a chance to get the next available office space. Uh, so our security force, they are a candidate, uh, for the, uh, offices, uh, but the, the house is big enough to put at least, uh, one or two, uh, offices in there. Uh, so one of the offices may be security, uh, or some of our other programs.
Well, I, I guess from my point of view, a security office in that house would be a better fit for the community than classrooms, which is why I'm trying to get a determination to, so that I can understand the, the effect of, uh, of the, uh, space on the community.
Well, let me put it this way, uh, it's a little small for classrooms. Uh, we probably would, uh, use it primarily for offices and our security offices, uh, probably would, since they don't have an office, we would give them, uh, a, a space in the building so that we had, uh, and it would help our campus security, uh, because we don't have, that would give us better security on that side near the gymnasium.
Another question I would have is how many properties does Shorter own along that block?
We don't own another, uh, property on, in, in the 608 block. We, uh, have, we own the house on the corner, uh, of, uh, Bishop Lindsey and, uh, Vine, uh, that's on the corner, but across the street, not on the same, uh, not on the same block, but across the street.
Okay.
If you were, if you, if you were going towards Sherman Park, uh, from, uh, the freeway, 700, 700 block.
Oh, so, okay. Mr. Green, how many, how many square feet are in this bill, in this house?
I have, uh, the brains of it, uh, with me, Mr. John Payne, uh, from our operations.
Yes, sir. Could you give me your name also, sir, please?
Yes, sir. My name is John Payne. I'm operations support manager for, for Shorter College.
Thanks.
I do not have with me, unfortunately, in the packet, the square footage of the house, but for the neighborhood that it is, it's essentially a house of the same size. It's, it's the, the, in fact, there's a house next to it that's about the same size. Um, uh, so, so it's, it's nothing out of ordinary. The, 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 the clearly plans we have for it right now, we don't have anyone necessarily set to occupy any spaces, but we're essentially building what's gonna be three offices and the, like, conference room, multi-room, like, like, like room, which is where we say if we had to have spillover classrooms or smaller classes, that's where the classroom would come from. It would not be a dedicated classroom setting, but if there were a smaller class or evening class meeting or a study group to be met, we, we would have that available once we actually have plans for who would be occupying the, the building.
Reason for my question is, is even, you know, I would guess it's probably 1,200 square feet, something like that, maybe.
It's, it's.
You know, even, even at that, if you use every square inch in there, every square foot in there, following state guidelines, you're not gonna have very many students in the classroom, so.
No.
That's gonna be pretty limited as far as how many students you can put in there.
When I originally took over the, oh, sorry, when I originally took over the project and just basically getting to rehab, the point was, we were just so cramped for space and the point was essentially to create the space for as much office space as possible. And that was, of course, before COVID-19 restrictions, so now we have even more restrictions for people occupying the, the space. But it's still the determination of when we get back to less restrictive, less restriction on space, it would be a multifunction, for lack of a better word, office room building for various people, various offices, uh, of, of the, of the campus, not yet determined. And of course, um, if there was like conference room space for a, a smaller class or some meetings at some point in time.
Okay, thank you. Well, hang on a second. Our, our even for the student government to meet, if it's, yeah.
In fact, that was one of our thoughts about the building, uh, is that we don't have anywhere for our student government to learn how to be.
Yeah.
Student, student government people, and so we're looking for a place to, to put them.
Sounds good.
Uh, yes, sir. At our last meeting, uh, we postponed this so that you could reach out to the community. Was that successful? Did you meet with them? Did you hear what they had to say?
Well, I, I have not had, I have not spoken directly to anyone. Um, I've asked, um, uh, my vice chairman of the board, who is a pastor in the community, Reverend Broomfield, to reach out in the community, uh, to help us with that. Uh, I did not get any, any positive, uh, feedback, uh, and of course I see, uh, that we've gotten, uh, renewed letters, uh, from at least, uh, two people, uh, that, uh, objected, uh, but I would have loved to have had a chance to, to sit down with the persons who, um, uh, objected, uh, to explain that, to them that, uh, that, uh, uh, our proposed use of the building is no threat to, uh, to their quiet enjoyment of the neighborhood.
Oh, we are happy to postpone it again, so you can have thirty, additional 30 days to do just that if necessary.
Mr. Chairman?
Someone's, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. I thought I was against.
Oh. No. It's, uh, uh, that building's got about, uh, 850 square feet in.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dietz.
There's a, there's a description of it on the last page of, of the handout.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dietz. Do you have any questions for Mr. Green?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, sir.
We do have, uh, a member from the community who is here who can speak.
We're, we're gonna do, we're gonna ask for people who want to spoken, speak in favor of it and people who would like to speak, uh, against it. Uh, uh, did, did we get any, uh, for or against it? I, I noticed we.
I was, yeah, I'm bad.
Yeah, we received, uh, about thirteen calls, uh, against it and a petition with a, about fifteen people signing it, and we mailed all that to you, so.
Okay.
Should've had all that, but, so about thirty, thirty folks between the petition and phone calls.
Okay. Do we have anybody else in the audience that would speak for this? That would support it? And if you would, give us your name and your address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Artis Boykin and I'm president of the Sherman Park Neighborhood Association, which is a part of the community where this house is located.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name one more time?
Artis Boykin.
Thank you.
Okay.
We certainly don't have any opposition to this move because certainly it would create an opportunity to eliminate vacant houses in our neighborhood and vacant houses create blight and blight can sometimes reduce the value of the property in the community, so we do not have any objection to this house being rezoned for the commercial use that's being asked for.
Thank you very much. Now, do we have anybody in the audience that'd like to speak against this? If y'all would just come up one at a time, please.
Yes, my name is Floyd Rippon. I live at 620 North Cedar, that's here in North Little Rock.
Okay.
Okay, I have a visual aid. Do I give that to someone or do I just place it?
He's been promoted.
Okay, uh, I'm here representing the people to, who oppose this issue, uh, rezoning, um, case number two, 2020-15. Uh, I have, uh, issued a, a statement that the, uh, owners have given me to present to you all. I don't know if the clerk has presented to you all yet, but it says that I am Floyd Rippon of North Little Rock, where my family and, and, where my family and children have resided for the past several decades. Uh, we, we are here today to represent the undersigned, uh, owners within the 200 feet of the property located at 201 North Vine Street in North Little Rock. Uh, I'm not gonna read the whole letter because, uh, my time is limited, but bottom line is that we oppose, uh, this issue. And one of the reasons why we oppose this issue is because Shorter already owns, uh, sufficient property that they can build whatever, whenever they want to. They are coming into a residential area that has been, uh, slated as residential and turned into a commercial. Now, our, our community has sacrificed over the years, and that's what it is, for the city of North Little Rock and Shorter, and we are feeling as though we are being stabbed in the back by Shorter by coming into our neighborhood in a residential area to commer, to com, to transform this lot into a commercial piece of property. Now, we have had issues with, with Shorter and, uh, I think Ms. Ross and Mr., um, uh, Cooley has issued statements of grievances against Shorter about parking and about, uh, cars, uh, parked on their land, on their property and about this house in particular. Ms. Ross has said that she has noticed night students, uh, driving, uh, parked in the driveway and, according to Ms. Ross, uh, drugs and alcohol has been, uh, in that area around this house. So with that being said, that's why we, that's the two, one of the two reasons that we have opposed, uh, this issue, because once this one lot is converted into a commercial, when is another piece of property is gonna be converted into, uh, commercial? We have state, we have shown that, uh, we have statements from, uh, all property owners that have been given letters by Shorter stating their opposition for, uh, this zoning. We have found that Shorter owns approximately 11 pieces of property in this neighborhood, in the, in the Sherman Park neighborhood. All those 11, three are homes and the property that's 608, uh, piece of property is one of the, one of the three, and they are zone residential, not commercial. Everything else that they own is zone commercial. My, my, the question I'm asking you is, why all of a sudden this one particular property, they want to zone commercial? They have two other houses. It's not commercial, it's residential. Why are you eroding into our community by this one particular piece of property being turned in commercial? And that's why we are here to oppose the, uh, rezoning case number 2020-15.
Hey, could you, could you tell me the, the, I know one of the properties is, I think, 700. Could you tell me the other one?
Hey, just a minute.
I believe.
The other residential, uh, piece of property is 700, uh, North Vine.
Okay, got it.
Then the one that's, we talking about now is 608 North Vine.
Okay.
And then there's a property that is, uh, the address is 712 Pine Street, which is next to the library.
Okay.
And again, I have all this documented on my, um.
I'm, I'm good.
On my exhibit.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to call for the question. Like to call for the question.
All right, let me see if there's anybody else that's opposed first, please. Uh, is there anyone else from the audience like to speak for or against this? Okay, you.
Yes, uh, the people that, uh, could not be here because of our Corona situation. That's why I have documents signed by them.
We, we have those.
And dated by them, saying why they could not show up, but they would have been here, but they are skeptical or frightened because of their health.
No, no, we, we understand that.
And we all have these documents here.
We, we have those documents.
You have these documents?
Yes, I, I've got those.
It should be about 15 of them?
Uh, yes, sir.
Uh, yes, that's them.
Okay, all right. So, uh, if we don't have any, a question has been called. Do we have a second?
Second.
Hey, we have a question and it's been seconded. We're now gonna vote. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
We're now gonna vote, and if you would, uh, call the roll, please.
Wallace? Phillips?
No.
Banks? Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
No.
Foster?
No.
Dietz?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes.
Thank you.
It failed. Ma'am, how many did we have positive, how many negative?
Three yes, four no.
Okay, and we had to have five? Sean?
Yes.
Okay, so it did, it did fail, but you're welcome to get with Mr. Reeves, uh, to take it to the city council, uh, but it did fail as far as, uh, the recommendation, and remember, we're only a recommending body. And we appreciate y'all's time today. It's, it's a tough, a tough one to call. All right? And if y'all would like to stay for the meeting, you're more than welcome, and if not, then I'll give you one minute, since we had the virus. Uh, if you could, call them tomorrow. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, good luck.
All right. Uh, this is number three, conditional use 2012. It's to allow a parking lot in a C6 zone at 901 Maple Street. Is the applicant in attendance?
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Brad Peterson with Crafton Toll Engineers, uh, 10-825 Financial Center Parkway in Little Rock, uh, representing the applicant, which is Rock Region Metro. And, uh, it's a application for a conditional use to allow parking in a C6 zoning. Uh, the application has been through the subdivision designer review committee. Uh, we've received, uh, staff report and conditions back from that body and are in agreement with the conditions as presented.
And currently it is a gravel parking lot?
Uh, yes, sir. It's a vacant lot. It's not, um, really manicured gravel, but it's, there's a gravel surface they can park on.
Are we gonna pave it or is it gonna be gravel?
Y- yes, sir. The next item is for a site plan.
Okay, okay.
To, um, pave the parking lot, curb and gutter, half-street improvement, sidewalks and landscaping, so.
Okay.
This takes care of the use and then we have the next item for a site plan.
No problem. Any, any questions from the commissioners? Do we have anyone from the audience that like would speak on this issue, whether it's for or against it? With that, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Chambers?
Yes.
Banks? Foster?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Velasco? Uh, White?
Yes. And to be clear, how did Mr. Dietz vote?
Dietz?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dietz. All right, it did pass. If you just get with Tim or Mr. Reeves or Mrs. Spencer tomorrow, they'll tell you what to do next. Okay. Oh, you gotta say it one more time, I forgot. All right, Mr. Chambers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, the design review committee met and considered the site plan for item SD 2020-51, Martha Cohen addition, block two, lot one, site plan review of a parking lot at 901 Maple Street. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 11 and subsections, and the design review committee recommends approval. I have a question, though.
Okay. Sorry.
Yes, yes, ma'am. Ms. Velasco?
I'm trying to second, sorry.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you.
And I have a question. Uh, there were some landscaping suggestions made at the design review committee. Was the landscape plan revised?
I don't know that we provided alternate, uh, species for the landscape plantings, but we understand the concerns with the columnar trees that are specified for street trees. We're in agreement with providing shade trees along Ninth Street if the covered parking is not installed. We understand the concerns with the Emerald Aravati along the south property line and how would they would grow out into the sidewalk, and we're, um, in agreement with providing an alternate species that will be evergreen but not, uh, impede the parking lot. lot or the sidewalk on the south side of the property.
Okay, thank you. With that, the development review committee recommends approval with the second. Yeah, second.
Okay, all right, do we have any other comments from the commissioners, any comments from the audience? All right, with that, would you call the roll, please?
Velasco?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Banks? Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes.
Hey, it did pass, know what to do. All right, Ms. Chambers?
Next item is SD 2020-52, East Argenta Block Five, Lot 10A, replat and site plan review of a restaurant at 716 East Broadway Street. Just so you know where this is, this is the Popeyes at, at 716 East Broadway. The applicant was present, agreed to items one through 12 and subsections, and the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Is the applicant here? Mr. Powell?
John Powell, Thomas Engineering Company, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
My only question is on the dumpster, being out of the easement, are we all good on that?
Yes, we moved it.
Okay, that's all I got. Does anyone else have any questions or concerns? All right, we have a motion, a second, would you call the roll, please?
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Dietz? Dietz? Velasco?
Yes.
Banks? Vice Chairman White?
Yes, and would you try Mr. Dietz one more time?
Please, go to the desk.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure you're there.
He's on to you now, Mr. White.
All right, Ms. Chambers?
Uh, next item is SD 2020-53, Ms. Mrs. M.A. Miller's subdivision, Lot C, site plan review of an office with a warehouse at 5900 East Broadway Street. The applicant was represented by the city and, and agreed, and agreed to the city's representation through, of items one through 10 and subsections, and the development review committee recommends approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any commissioners have any comments? Anyone here representing this?
Mr. Butler had called, and he's in treatments right now, so he's, he's not able to attend, but he said he'd, oh, you're here, okay, he said, he said no, no one was gonna come, so. Oh, he's the owner, okay, okay.
Oh, well.
I reached out to Norman Clifton yesterday, and he suggested I come if he had any questions.
Okay.
Glenn Thomas, number two, Orley Circle, Little Rock.
Thank you.
Basically, if you just have any questions for us in regards to this building, sports building.
Does anyone ever have any comments? Any comments from the people on the phone, commissioners on the phone, any comments from the audience? All right, with that, would you call the roll?
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Banks? Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Dietz?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes, it did pass, thank you very much, have a nice day. All right, with that, we're gonna go to case 2020-17 to rezone from R3 zoning classification to the proposed C3 classification to allow a convenience store with fuel pumps. Do we have the representative here?
My name is Justin Mitchell, and I'm with Richardson Engineering at 235 West South Street.
And you just want to put a convenience store with fuel pumps, okay?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions or concerns? The staff recommends approval. Do we have a motion?
Review.
Second, yeah, I know. Okay, so we do have a motion, second, but anyway, would you call the roll? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, is there anyone like to speak against this? I apologize, come to the front, please, sir. You would state your name and address, please.
Certainly. My name is Robert Wayne Swan, I live at 4401 Haywood Street, that's Row City. If you look at this piece of property, I have a copy of my letter, and I'm sure they were required by somebody to mail these out to tell you, you know, who all is gonna be involved. There are only two people on the, that got letters that lived there, everything else is a shopping center. Myself and Mr. and Ms. Lewis and Brady Johnson, that's it. Where they want to put this convenience store, I lived there all my life, grew up in a family grocery store, that was my home address, I know it very well. One block away is a convenience store that has three gas pumps, you go another block, there's another convenience store that has four gas pumps. Across the street from this location is a shopping center that has a full-fledged grocery store. There is nothing that they can offer that we don't already have, but what they're gonna bring, in my opinion, is traffic. It's bad enough to try to get on East Broadway with no traffic signal, it's only gonna increase the traffic on Haywood Street where I live, people trying to go to and from to get to that convenience store, it's just gonna make it awful, and I'm opposed to it.
Is 4313, and your neighbors to the, I guess, left and right, and then you're at 4401?
Correct.
And at 4315, are there, are those residential, all three of those?
The house next to me is Lois Lewis, and she would be at, I should have brought my glasses, shouldn't I? You have the same thing, right? Okay, that's, there's only four residences on Haywood Street.
That's what I was asking, they're all residents, so.
The other people, if you'll notice, there's nobody else here, they don't have a dog in this fight. The grocery store don't care, the bank don't care, only people care is us.
And that's the reason I asked you if those are residential?
Yeah.
All four of those properties.
And I think Mr. Dietz sold that property. Not that that has anything to do with it, but he's familiar with it, too. I don't, I think they should put, you know, even another grocery store with nothing but food or something, but we don't need any more convenience stores in our neighborhood. You have any questions for me?
Any questions, commissioners? Anyone from the audience have any comments, Ms. Chambers?
I have one question, and this may be out of order, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Mr. Spencer, reflecting on the site plan proposed for this property, only a tiny piece of the proposed convenience store tract is R3, and that's only the tiny piece that's being rezoned to C3. Wasn't the remain, residual property, because this is the old Humms Hardware property, wasn't the residual property going to be residential on Haywood? Wasn't that what that was showing on their plan?
Correct, so they're really, if we're looking at the drawing up there, the yellow, there's two yellows, but the yellow, uh, box, boundary, is the property, and that, the yellow shading in the back part of it is what's being rezoned, so 80% of the property is zoned correctly for this, and it's just the back, the back.
And when I reviewed the site plan review process, they were doing a site plan for the property from Broadway to Haywood, but what they were doing was allocating the land along Haywood to be residential lots.
Correct, they've created two lots there that will be available for residents.
So what they're actually doing, sir, is they're actually creating not only the four houses that are there, but two more residences will be built on your street, because we're not rezoning that to commercial, they're actually adding residential along your street. I understand your opposition to having yet another fuel station, but we're, the feeling around the commission is we're kind of opposed to having yet another car sales lot, which the area proliferates in also, but I did think it was good of them to increase the residential, available lots in that area, so that's, that's what they're doing to the land that fronts on Haywood that they also control.
Have you ever been out there?
Yes, sir, I have.
Nobody's gonna build a house on that corner, there's a house next to there that's vacant, that's been vacant for five years.
Wow.
Nobody's gonna do that, they've got a, where Row City Elementary is, which is now going to be a church and a adult education again, they're never gonna build a house out there, ever. Now, if y'all want to do this in about 10 years after I'm gone, you're more than welcome.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody have a question?
I'm good.
Anyone have a question? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Call the roll.
Dietz?
Abstained.
I'm sorry, Dietz?
Abstained.
Abstained.
Chambers?
Not vote.
Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Banks? Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
No.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes. Okay, it did pass, but remember, we're a recommending body, so you still have the ability to go in front of city council, they'll, they're the deciding body. Appreciate your time. All right, 2020-54, Broadway.
That's mine.
Do what? Oh, is that yours? I'm glad, because I didn't know what CK stood for.
The design review committee met and considered SD 2020-54, Broadway CK lots 1R, 2R, 3R, and 4R replat and site plan review of a convenience store with fuel pumps at 4300 Broadway Street. This is the site plan review for the previously heard case, rezoning case. The applicant was present and agreed to items one through 15 and subsections, and the development review committee recommended approval.
Second.
I, I have a question, sir, and could you go back to the front? All right, the young man that would, had just been here, will there be a fence at the back of this property and the side between commercial and residential?
The trees, so there'll be a wood privacy fence and planting, and landscaping trees every 20 feet, is that, yeah, 20, every 20 feet.
All right, and where would, where would, and just because you hear these at night, and where would the dumpster be?
What is your dumpster location?
Let me check that real quick.
It is on the, the bank side of the building, so it's attached to the building, to the, I had the wrong drawing up there, but it'd be towards the north, so it's not on the neighborhood side, it's not in the back.
On the neighbor's side.
Yeah, it's not in the back, so it'd be on the bank side, which is.
On the northeast side.
Okay, and the other thing, on the lighting, the lighting we're gonna use is downlighting, so it doesn't affect those people?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what else am I missing, Mr. Chambers, that would protect those four neighbors?
I cannot emphasize evergreen trees enough along your, your buffer area.
Pardon me?
Along your buffer area.
Yes, sir.
Use evergreen trees.
Evergreen trees?
Yes, to the greatest extent possible to further screen the neighbors from the lights.
Yes, sir.
Because even though we ask for downlights, it bounces terribly.
It still bounces, yeah.
It's still bright across the property line.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we don't have any problem with that?
I don't, I don't anticipate it, the, um, the engineer, the lead engineer, he had a medical emergency, so.
That's, that's all right, I know you're not speaking for him.
But I'll pass it on to him, I don't see that being a problem at all.
Okay, all right, and if, if you could, Mr. Spencer, can we put that in so the city council knows we requested that or not? The trees.
That mostly evergreen trees be used in the buffer.
Can you change that to 10K?
Yes.
Yes.
Someone, someone makes a motion, and then we can change that, and vote on it.
I move, I move that the item 10K be revised so that the majority of the plantings in the buffer are evergreen trees, such as cherry laurel, live oak, ollie.
Okay, so that would be an amendment, so we'd need to vote on that?
Yes, please.
Okay, does everyone understand we're gonna vote on the amendment to 10?
K.
K.
Increase the buffer to have more evergreen trees in it.
Okay.
Second?
No, we need to call the roll, because of the other people, oh, second, I'm sorry, misunderstood, all right, would you call the roll? I know, it's hard to do that, I'm getting so good at this, though.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Banks? Foster?
Yes.
Wallace?
No.
Dietz?
What is this for?
Mr., this is, this is for the amendment, everyone, we're not voting on the main, we're just, we're voting on the amendment to protect the neighbors more.
This is on number eight?
This is, still number eight, Mr. Dietz.
I can't vote.
Staying on votes, sir.
Abstained.
Phillips?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes, but would you ask Mr. Wallace if he understood that that was the amendment to protect the neighbors?
Mr. Wallace, did you understand that was amendment?
Uh, no, so I, I may, I changed my vote, vote to yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're gonna vote on SD 2020-54, would you call the roll?
Chambers?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Banks? Foster?
Yes.
Dietz?
Abstained.
Phillips?
Yes.
Wallace?
No.
And Vice Chairman White?
Yes, please, it did pass, feel get with.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Plant nice trees for us, please.
Yes, sir, I'll do my best.
Okay, all right, we're on the last one, and this is mine, right?
Yes, sir, this is.
A special use 2020-10 to allow outdoor sales, display, and entertainment in a I2 zone, would the applicant come forward, please?
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment before she begins?
Yes.
I just want to say that the, the design review committee met on this, and, and, please read the conditions, we, we thought about this hard and gave it tremendous consideration, so a lot of your questions as commissioners can be answered if you read the conditions to be considered, and I'm sure the applicant will also have some things to add.
Okay, go ahead, tell us what you would like to do.
My name is Tammy Muse, and this is Dale Chiketti, we're at 7420 Count's Massey Road, Marmell, Arkansas, and we have Hometown Country Marketplace, and we just do home decor, crafts, antiques, and flea market type venue. And we have asked to extend our hours, I'm, I'm a little, just, I fell yesterday and hurt myself, so I'm a little, just not organized tonight.
That's okay, take your time. They don't have to be anywhere for at least two minutes.
Okay, so our hours. Okay, so our hours used to be Monday through Saturday. Actually, I thought they were Monday through Sunday and we've asked for them to be Monday through Sunday from six to eight PM.
Yes, ma'am, that's what we have on our sheet.
Yes, everything that's on here, there isn't anything that I'm actually opposed to any of this. And we have, we have already marked our handicap ramp and we've marked our parking spots for our four handicap spots.
Have we heard anything from the neighbors or anyone?
The, we, uh, the reason this is before us is we received a complaint on, on the issue and so we, we contacted them and they're in there to change their original, uh, they had a special use or conditional use and so they're fixing the time and then while they're fixing the time issue, uh, because they were wanting to be open on Sundays, uh, there are some issues with the, the COVID and, you know, it's an indoor flea market and it's sort of hard to do an indoor flea market when people are not wanting to go indoors to do that, so they're asking to do some of the stuff outside.
Okay.
And so, so it's, they're, we're gonna allow thirty tents outside with, uh, where the, where, you know, they're spaced out enough where people can meander through everything and not feel uncomfortable.
Go for it, okay. Ms. Chambers?
Uh, yes, I'll ask Mr. Foster to help me with this. Item four, uh, Mr. Foster, uh, outdoor sales permitted under eight foot by ten foot tents. Eight by ten tents are rare and hard to find, ten ten, ten by ten tents are common. And considering the nature of the complaint, okay, I'd rather be, I'd rather, uh, have it say ten foot by ten foot tents and if you happen to have eight foot by ten foot tents, you're within your range, okay?
Okay, okay.
So I'd like to change condition number four to say ten foot by ten foot tents.
So the eight by tens are okay, too, because that's...
Oh, yeah, or four by four or whatever you wanna put, but no bigger than ten by ten.
Yes, sir. Oh, yeah, yeah.
But, but if, if we, if we said eight by ten and someone came out there and wanted to be picky, you'd be back here again.
Okay, yeah.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, so we have amendment. Do we have a second?
I don't, I, there's no motion yet, so.
Oh, I thought you were making one.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just suggesting we change and, and I don't know necessarily requires a motion and a second to change that, but I don't think so.
Ms. City Attorney, do we need amendment on that to change the tents from eight by ten to ten by tens?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right.
It's just a changing of a condition.
Yeah, not a problem. All right, do we have any other, uh, questions or anyone from the outside that would like to speak for it or against it in the audience? And with that, would you call the roll?
Wallace?
Yes.
Phillips?
Yes.
Velasco?
Yes.
Chambers?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Banks? Dietz?
Yes.
Vice Chairman White?
Yes. Good luck.
Is that it? Are we good? Thank you all very much and y'all stay.
Yeah, good luck to you.
You guys stay safe.
Thanks for working with us, okay? All right, uh, public comment, does anyone have anything to say besides Steve? I just have a question. I'm just, no, it's, it's, uh, uh, last time we had the, uh, that was on our agenda about the mini storage by the apartments of, uh, North Hills. What has happened on that?
They, uh, well, obviously they withdrew that request and they were meeting with the Lakewood Property Owners Association and they're gonna come back with a PUD. That's specific to, you know, instead of C four, which could allow a bunch of items, they're gonna come back with a PUD which is specific to only that use.
Okay, yeah, okay, and, and this may be ahead of the, so where they're gonna put it is on the other side of the swamp and they're not gonna cut down any of the trees but, between North Hills and where they want to put it.
Correct.
Correct. And, uh, on that. Okay, as a public comment and I was the chairman, I'm just totally against it as a Lakewood member.
Member, yep.
Yeah, so I'll contact Lakewood and let them know, so, but anyway, any, any other comments?
Steve, we also, uh, met with them and, uh, you know, I think they have like fifty-seven trees that are gonna plant out there and I think we made it clear to them we want the bulk of those to be planted, you know, so it'll provide more, uh, visual protection between, you know, North Hills Boulevard and their development there.
And again, you know, I'm speaking as chairman, just as a citizen, and should I go speak from there or am I?
Now, you're fine.
Okay. I, I just think, you know, our big concern on apartments were, was the traffic and the traffic light and now you got a mini storage and going, and they may say it's not all ours, but it is all ours because if you got a code, you can go anytime you want unless they shut it down. So I just think that's a, a lot of additional traffic on that area. Plus, you know, and I wouldn't for their apartments, but their apartments are very pretty, it's just gonna block them, you know, the looks of them, in my opinion. So anyway, that's just my public comment from a citizen.
And just make sure, anybody watching, everything, we, there, we're talking about it, but we're not voting or anything on it, so it's not...
It's just a public comment.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's, it's gonna be coming back, but...
I kept all of that.
It wasn't on today's agenda or anything like that.
No, it is not on the agenda, no. And again, I was speaking as a citizen, not as a, a planning commissioner. So, all right, with that, do we have a motion? Mr. Dietz?
So moves.
Move it, turn.
And we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.